Hello, my name is Tony Newton. I'm Chair of the Boxborough Finance Committee, the FinCom. Today, I'm also joined-
By Bob Semple. I'm a member of the Boxborough Select Board.
And we're going to talk about the presentation of the budget for the Boxborough Annual Town Meeting coming up on May the 12th. This is the Finance Committee presentation. Bob has been closely involved in budget preparation as well. And we want to go through some of the key points to help with some of the questions that might come up at town meeting. So just as a kickoff here, this presentation really has two main parts to it. One is the main budget, how the budget was prepared, the total budget, the operating budget. What are the warrant articles and the various sources of funding for these warrant articles? And then we'll talk about some key points that are coming up this year. One is the tax levy limit and excess levy capacity. The second one is the use of bonding or loans and our impact on our debt in town. And thirdly, use of free cash and how that impacts our reserves. So we should probably talk about first about the actual process for putting the budget together. This is a long process starting in January, right Bob?
Exactly. With the Select Board works with the budget. We work with the department managers throughout the year to make sure they stay on track as well as the FinCom. And then when it gets into the fall is where really when we kind of back off and let the FinCom take over the preparation of the budget. We, as Tony mentioned, we call big meetings together as far as Capital Saturday, Budget Saturday, and then other meetings along the way. It's really driven by the FinCom as far as putting the budget together. And remember that the actual town budget is presented by the FinCom at the annual town meeting. The Select Board votes on it as to approve it or not based upon our working with the FinCom. But it's really their work and it's really their whole show in as far as what they need to present to the town and what they feel is important that the taxpayers and residents know. So yeah.
And the main part of the budget is the operating budget, which is all of the town expenses as well as education expenses. Interesting thing about this is that we have, one, we have a very large education component to that budget. And secondly, when you look at the town budget components, much of this is actually mandatory costs that we can't avoid. Things like insurance, employee benefits and pension benefits.
Right. Now, Tony, one question I wanted, on the operating budget, from the slide that people will see, it looks like the education is more than 50%. I mean, how much is it really?
It is, yeah, it's really that much, yeah. So this is mainly, and you'll see in the following slide, mainly the Acton Boxer Regional School District Assessment. But there's also an element in there for now for vocational schools, which is a rapidly, a small but rapidly growing part of that.
So between the regional school system, which includes Blanchard Elementary and the vocational schools now, it's more than 50%?
It actually is, yeah, for operating budget, yeah. Yeah. Other big components here are protection, obviously fire, police is very important to us. And town government is a big cost, of course. But as I say, most of this, much of this is actually things we can't avoid. And things which are discretionary are very small slices, health services, culture and recreation, that sort of thing.
Okay, alright.
So when we look at the actual operating budget, the increase this year is about 4.6% on operating budget. The town part of that is 3.45%. So that doesn't include the education box, which we'll come to in a moment.
Right, so I mean, right there, out of a 4.6, the town itself only went up 3.45. That's really what we can control as the Select Board and as the FinCom is the 3.45. Because the difference to go to 4.6 is the school, which a lot of it is the region, we can't control that.
And much of the town we can't control either, actually. So in fact, the entire budget, much of it is uncontrollable. So keeping it within these sort of like 4% to 5% limit is actually quite difficult. So again, when you look at what's driving that budget, it's employee benefits, it's retirement assessment, it's town insurances on the town side of things. And then when we come to this school budget, which is here, that goes up by 5.6%.
And again, that is different than region because that now includes the vocational schools.
So the region is at 5.4%. If you add in the actual vocational schools, it's slightly more than that, 5.6%. Now, what's important to point out here is that the school budget, the actual school district budget only went up by 2.11%. That's the total Acton and Boxborough assessments. The Boxborough assessment went up more than that because of increasing enrollment from Boxborough and decreasing enrollment from Acton.
And I believe, clarify the point for me, that the enrollment you're talking about, the agreement that we have with the district is that it's on a three-year rolling average?
Correct, it's a three-year trailing average. So yeah, so we're actually taking a benefit of the fact that we're looking sort of three years back.
So we're on an upslide right now and as opposed to an increase for this year, we're looking at an increase over the past, an increase now but averaged over the-
Based on the last three years, yeah.
On the past three years of Boxborough children going to school.
Correct, yeah, and that trend is likely to continue as we can predict right now.
Oh, it's going to continue?
It's hard to predict, but I think that's how it's going to go in the future. And then we've got additional, then the other thing to point to make here is that the Acton Boxer Regional School District budget only increases by 2.11%. That's a very low increase. They've had a very tough year this year in the district. They've had to do some cutbacks. They've actually cut back, we'll be cutting about 20 and a half FTEs in the district.
They, really?
On top of previous cuts from the previous year. So there's been a tough few years for the district. So we should recognise what the school committee has done to keep that screwed down.
I mean, that's great, 2%, considering that our town is up 3%. So I mean, the district actually kind of beat out the town in a way.
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. And then we have this non-Acton Boxer District education, which is the vocational schools. And that again is something which we can't really control. It depends on how many kids get enrolled at Minuteman Tech and the Shobba Tech and those places. And that increased seemingly this year by 24%.
So I was going to say, where did, you know, off the top of your head, what vocational schools we have children in? We have Minuteman.
Yeah, the Shobba Valley, I think is the other one.
So just two?
Yeah, just as far as I know right now, yeah.
It's just the two, the Shobba Valley and Minuteman. But there is potential for another one or another two.
Potentially, yes, yeah, yeah.
Depending upon what the child wants to take as a vocation at those schools.
Correct, yeah, but the point here from budgeting point of view is that we can't really control that expense. You know, it depends on which kids apply and which kids get in to those schools.
And off subject for a second, do they automatically get in, do you know?
Not necessarily, no, it's pretty tough to involve those schools, yeah.
Okay, so we pay in, we have no control of it, and yet there's no guarantee either?
No, we only pay if the kid goes to school there. We don't pay anything in advance of that.
And we pay about, we pay per student?
We pay per student.
We're not a lot of 10 and pay on 10?
No, no. So when you put it all together, then you have the total budget, which is the operating budget, which again is two components, the Acton Boxer School District component and the town budget. And then you've got warrant articles, which is the separate items in the town budget, which will be voted on separately at town meeting. And they make up about 15% of the total budget for the town, which means we need to find about $35 million in town finances in our budget.
For everything?
For everything, operating budget and all the warrant articles.
And the warrant articles as well, okay.
So, and then sources of funds for that. The vast majority of that comes from taxes, comes from, you know, what we call the levy, which is the property taxes.
Which is what I pay on my house.
Which you pay on your house. We can offset some of that with revenues that come from the state and other sources. We can offset some of that with reserves. We have some amount of free cash we can use. And then we have bonding, which is a topic which we should talk about momentarily. So bonding is basically a loan we take out for various large expenses and that comes in here.
So it's interesting because, again, this is sources of revenue. So the fact that the taxes are 80% and bonding is a source of revenue because we've borrowed the money, so that's how it's coming into the town.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay, as opposed to an expense, it's a source of the revenue.
Correct, and you've noticed that the number at the bottom here, 35 million, is the same as the previous slide. It's basically saying we have to match whatever we spend with some way of achieving that money.
Got it, I understand.
So then if you look at what's in the warrant articles, we have different ways of actually funding those warrant articles. RNA is raised and appropriate, this is what comes from taxes. So we have, in the warrant, there's a number of articles that we'll talk about, which are voted on, which are raised and appropriate warrant articles. Important thing about this is that these warrant articles, when they're, if they get voted yes and approved by the town, will be added to the operating budget. So we'll do a revised budget after town meeting that will actually then roll in all of these articles that get approved to make the final budget, the final operating budget.
As you said, so the warrant articles will become part of the operating budget?
For these particular topics, yeah. Just for these particular articles here. And then you've got articles from bonding. So this year we've got four of those, quite large ones. The big ones here are the fire station design fees, which are $1.7 million. And we have the new fire truck, Article 42, which is $1.2 million. These are going to add, all of these four together are going to add 4.2 million to our debt requirement.
Now, of these four that you've shown me, I've lived in town for 32 years, so road maintenance is there every single year.
That's there every year.
And then the dump truck, we pretty much get a dump truck every year or every other year, that's there every-
Yeah, this is a repair to a dump truck, it's an expensive repair because, you know, it's prudent for us, in this case, to actually repair the truck rather than replace it. But it's still expensive.
And the other one is the fire engine. As fire engines go, again, like police cruisers or as you mentioned the dump truck, we have to get a fire engine every so often and that's just what it is.
And they're an expensive piece of kit.
Oh, exactly, so those three are what I want, even though they're warrant articles, they're separate, we see those all the time. So the only one, real new one, is the fire station, which we'll get into details.
They all need to be voted on and they all need to be agreed by the town before we can do them. The thing, all these debts here will be added to existing debt, so it's a significant debt increase, actually. So we should not gloss over that.
No, you're right, exactly, I'm seeing 4.2 million. And as far as the debt and the bonds, I know I've heard in the past that we've always gotten a good bond, we have a good bond rating which helps us secure these bonds. Is that still true as far as the town?
No, no, we have AAA bond rating, which is good for us because it means that we can borrow money more advantageously. And that's because we manage our finances effectively. So I mean, that's a good sign for the town that we have not gone in extreme debt. You know, we paid our bills on time, we've done all the right things to actually keep our bond rating high, so that's important.
And the AAA, is that the highest or are we?
I believe it's the highest, yeah.
And we've had that for a few years?
Yes. And then we have some money from free cash and there's many articles here, smaller ones, which are added up in this chart here, where we've used free cash, which is really the money that we have in our working funds that is often money left over from previous budgets, not spent. We keep it in free cash and that's available for certain things in the budget. So there's a small amount here that we can use to actually balance the budget out.
So this was, I'm going to use a simple term, this amount of money, it's called $800,000. This was taxes that were raised in the past that were not used in the operating budget?
It's been, yeah, it's our float, we've had for years and it goes up and down each year. And we try to maintain it at a certain level of comfort.
Free cash?
Free cash, yeah, yeah. So it all goes together then into the total budget, which is, you know, on one side, all of the expenses and the other side, all of the income, and it has to balance out. So that's where we are with our budget this year.
So, okay, so all of the revenue from the sources and then all of the expenses, as you said, have to come to the 35, as I'm seeing here, call it $35 million.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
And then my only question, and I'm assuming this slide is going to go up, I'm seeing 35 million, but then the levy limit, you want to get into that or later on?
We'll get into that momentarily, actually, it's a very good question to you.
Trying to run out.
You're ahead of the game here, but it is a good question. So coming up now, I think there's three big questions now for the town to be thinking about as we go into this year's annual town meeting. And also thinking about next year, thinking long-term strategically for the town. So the first thing is the tax levy limits and excess levy capacity, and we'll talk about that momentarily. Secondly is the use of debt and bonding and how that affects us. And then thirdly, use of free cash and how that affects us. So these are critical, I would say, strategic questions for the town.
Sure.
So firstly, some definitions which we should all, you know, just get our minds around.
Do I have to get an accounting degree?
There'll be a test on this afterwards. So the levy is the property tax, basically. This is the amount that the community raises through the property tax and it can be any amount the town chooses to vote for up to the levy limit. The levy limit is set based on what the levy was last year. Well, based on what levy limit was last year and going back many, many years. Every year that levy limit is increased by 2.5%. That's the proposition 2.5 law that says it can increase by 2.5% a year plus it can increase a little bit more for any new growth in the town.
Growth being what?
Like new property, new property added to the town. So the town value would increase if new houses are built. The total property value in the town would increase by that much money.
And commercial as well?
And commercial as well, commercial, residential value of the town increases, therefore we can increase, the levy limit can increase. So in reality, this 2.5%, which is the law, is more like 4% than, yeah, 2.5 to 4%.
Because if you take 2.5 plus growth, you get-
Yeah, roughly, yeah. So different towns are different, but that's what it is with Boxborough and our rate of growth.
Okay, great.
Raised appropriate RNA, that's what we use the term for anything which goes into levy calculation. So that's a taxable calculation. And then an override, which is a term we could hear more of, is when a town votes to raise the levy limit beyond that prop 2.5 amount. So towns do this periodically and they have to do this.
Yeah, excuse me, I just heard Harvard is doing one, an override for $1.4 million.
Yep, so, you know, the way you sort of, you know, you'll get over the fact that you have a limit is you have an override. So if you look, so if you look at Boxborough in particular, I think it's worth looking at the numbers, what you see is that if you look at the annual levy increase over the last 10 years for Boxborough, it's been on average 4%. That's the 2.5% plus the new growth. So the total increase, 47%. If you look at what our levies increase has been, it's been 5% on average. This year it would be the same ballpark. Total increase, 60%. So the math on that is, you know, it's not very, you know, very difficult to work out. Eventually, those two numbers will coincide. So the next slide shows you graphically what this does. What this does is it says that the levy, excess levy capacity between those two lines actually is getting narrower and narrower over time. So if we forward it to 2026, next year, that will be too close for comfort, I think. So we're going to need to seriously consider a proposition 2.5 override.
And is it because it's too close or because we're in violation of the law?
No, no, we're not in violation of the law until, we just can't go beyond that levy limit, so.
Well, what happens if we do go over the limit?
We have to stay within it, we have to budget accordingly, stay within it.
But, I mean, the obvious answer, the obvious question or the obvious problem I see is expenses are going much faster than 2.5%. Whether you consider union negotiations, regular salary increases.
Just inflation, yeah.
Whether it's the cost of pens and pencils and supplies and the things that the town hall buys, the things that the EPW buys, you know, the salt for the road in the winter, that's going up more than 2.5%. So you add all that together, this is causing the problem.
Yeah, and doing a proposition 2.5 override is not an unusual thing for towns. Every town does it every few years, you know, we just have to-
We've been fortunate, we haven't had to do it in a while.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean it's a tax increase. What it means is we're just raising our flexibility so we can do a tax increase in the future to actually keep us within, you know, at our 5% level.
So explain that to me, so are you saying if we do an override, we change the percentage from 2.5 to some higher number?
No, no, we just move the line, we move this top line here up so that we have more capacity to actually continue to increase our budget by 5% a year, say.
Oh, I see, okay.
Rather than, you know, make some more space in the override, in the levy limit to actually let us do that.
So if we do an override next year, does that stay in place in year two and year three?
That will then stay in place, yeah, that will stay in place.
So once you vote it?
You reset the levy limit at that point.
So in the two years, would we have to do another override or we would stay with what we did?
It would depend how big the override was, we'd have to decide what we wanted to do about that. So that's what we're going to talk about next year, I think, is what's that number look like?
Oh, I see, okay.
So just a little bit more flavour on this, this is new growth, which was one of the components of that. So what you see here is that new growth in Boxborough has actually been very uneven. It's actually, we've had one year of high growth, which was, I think, the enclave and some commercial development in 2023. Apart from that, it's been very low and it's declining. So we, and we know that in Boxborough, there's not much house building going on, not much commercial development going on. So, you know, we can't really expect new growth to give us that levy capacity.
And right, and the new growth, go back to your answer that I asked the question, it really has to do with new houses.
And commercial.
I was going to say, yeah, it has to do with new houses and new businesses. And the fact that Boxborough has a lot of conservation land and has a lot of woodlands to speak. There's a very limited amount of places you could build a new house.
I think housing is limited, yes, that's right, I mean the-
But by commercials?
Maybe the MBTA zoning might change that a little bit.
But the commercial aspect of that could grow with what we have over on the other side of 495. On Brever Book, and some of the businesses that are empty right now, they're trying to rent them out. If businesses went in there for commercialisation, whether it be the little mall we have on Mass Ave or whether it be the manufacturing buildings we have further on Mass Ave, if we were able to get more commercial base in those, that would help with this.
Yeah, I think this is a town-wide question. I think it's a question for the Select Board maybe, for the Planning Board and for the Economic Development Board to be thinking about these things of how do we encourage developments, given the constraints we have as a town? We know there obviously are constraints with water, sewer, that sort of thing. But I mean, we can do some things to actually increase development in town.
And with commercialisation, and I know you as well, I've raised two children, went through the school system and they move on, but with a house, you're putting children in the school system. With commercialisation, you're not adding that expense to it. And we all know that for many people in town, they move to the AB school system, follow the AB school system and they've had the benefits, as I said, I have and other people have. But there is an expense to that.
That's right, that's the clungrum, right?
Exactly, exactly, okay.
So the plan forward, I think, on the levy, and again, it's not really a question for town meeting this year, but it's a question for next year, is what do we do? And the proposal is that we, in terms of the levy itself, we should continue to control it as we can, as we have done this year. Keep it in that 5% bracket because that's where we can, I think, work effectively, understand that certain expenses are not within our control.
Correct, exactly.
We need to maintain our services, we need to maintain a good education, our school system. And, you know, obviously there are issues there with controlling that. And for the levy limit, we need to be thinking about an operational override to increase that levy limit. So we have some flexibility. And bear in mind, we haven't had done an override in Boxborough since 2006, so it's 20 years since the last override.
2006?
Yeah, yeah, 2006. So I mean, so if we can, you know, if we can put a position in place where we can keep that, you know, have another override that lasts another 20 years or 10 years even, that would be, I think, where we should try to go to. But that would be a vote at next year's town meeting.
So, and that, thank you, that's great for, so 20 years. On the override, and I don't know if you can answer now or you will on town floor, is it an override for a specific item or is it just in general? That we, you know, we need a million dollars in total? Or do we say we need a million dollars and 600,000 of that is for operation?
It's for general, so it's an operational override which would give us an extra, say, $5 million for, you know, of capacity for future budget increases at that, say, 5% level. So that we have more years to go before we hit the ceiling again.
So it's not because of, it's not to protect against one thing, it's just an overall safety factor, cushion as you use the word?
It's a cushion, yeah, yeah. Okay, next question is really our bonding question and our debt. So we have existing debt of 5.8 million, we're going to add to that with 4.2 million, which is a significant increase. And we have to remember and realise that the new fire station will be about a $30 million expense coming up. Not this year's town meeting, this is for next year's town meeting. But I think the town need to understand that this is coming in a year's time for a vote.
The 30 million, does that hit one year or does that go over the?
That would be a 30-year bond, I think, as we understand it right now.
So the difference is, as you just, it's a debt that we're going to carry for 30 years. But it's not, it doesn't hit the expenses in one year, carries it over 30 years.
But it will be, it'll be an operating budget expense to service the debt for all of those years. So we have to recognise that's going to be an expense, that's going to hit our tax requirements for 30 years. So, you know, again, not a question for town meeting this year, but a question we need to really make people aware of that is coming up in the future.
So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask a question that's probably not right. If we say it's $30 million and I'm assuming it's going to be a 30-year bond that we get for them. So that would mean we would have a 30 divided by 30, we would have about a million dollar expense per year?
I don't think you can do the math that easily, right? This is like a home mortgage, you know, so there'd be a bonding schedule rather like your mortgage schedule on your house. And there are different ways of structuring it based on whether you want to pay equal amounts of debt, of principal each time or stagger it over the years. So that is a question for the town treasurer, actually, who needs to decide how we best structure that debt in the future.
Right, like you said, for a mortgage, which way is the best one? Do they get a jumbo APL, whatever, the thing, okay, I understand now, okay.
And so in terms of this year's debt, what you can see here is that you've got declining debts from the existing debts that we already have. We have bonds already out for previous expenses, you know, road maintenance, fire trucks and whatever. And then we have an increasing debt for this year's expenses. This actually spikes up in two years' time, three years' time because the fire truck actually doesn't get delivered for two years. And the fire design costs also are staggered back. So it's not an immediate impact, but it will increase and then decline.
Right, so you're looking at the spike from, if I see this correct on this chart, which people will see at town meeting. In 2028 is when you're seeing the big spike that will-
Yeah, and it's to do with the way the debt is structured. Again, there are different ways of structuring this, this may not be quite how it turns out in the end. And bear in mind, this does not include the fire station building costs, which would be significantly above this in terms of- this is just this year's town meeting.
Oh, this is just for the design concept?
The design and the fire truck and the other things in this year's bonding schedule.
So this is not the fire station at all in these numbers here?
No, no.
Okay, and the million dollars, right, exactly, is the fire truck and the other things as well, okay.
So the third point to make is reserves and using free cash. This is a bit of a, this is a happier story, actually. In the town, we have pretty good reserves, actually. We have got reserves for our short-term reserve, we've got our strategic reserve, we have free cash. We've used some of that this year in the budget, but we still have a very good cushion of free cash, actually. So this is what we want to keep a little bit in our back pocket for any future requirements.
I'm going to ask some of the buzzwords I've heard around as a Select Board member. Stabilisation, what's a stabilisation?
That's basically a longer-term strategic reserve. So we really only dip, we only dip into that if we really need to. And to dip into that, we need to get a vote at town meeting actually to use that.
To use, and then the same thing on that, and I've heard the other thing, we try maintaining a 10%. Is that free cash, is that stabilisation, what was that, I heard that number, 10%?
5%.
Oh, 5%, okay.
Yeah, 5% for free cash, so we're well above that number, actually.
5%?
5% of the operating budget for free cash.
For free cash is what the Finance Committee tries to maintain?
Well, Finance Committee and Select Board actually have jointly agreed a set of financial policies for the town. And that's one of those. So for each of these, there's a policy that says we want to be a certain percentage of operating budget for each of these reserves. And we've all agreed that and that's what we stick to. We publish those and that's what gets us our high bond rating, the fact that we have policies and we stick to them.
Yeah, that's a good thing, that's a good So the policy we set was between the Select Board and the FinCom was that we have 5% and the fact that we've been able to stick to that policy, written policy, is what the bonding agencies look at.
That's one of the things they look at, yeah, yeah. Is are we managing our money appropriately?
Yeah, we just don't put words out there, we actually act to it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's really the summary of where we are this year with the FY '26 budget.
Okay.
The operating budget will increase by 4.6%. That number will increase once we've got warrant articles to roll into that. So it's going to be more like 5%, I think, when we get there.
So, okay, so 4.6 plus the warrants, max you're anticipating 5%.
Don't hold me, don't hold me, it depends what gets voted in, right? And also, you know, there are things we don't actually quite know yet, like collective bargaining agreements for police and fire and DPW are not yet known. So there's some unknowns there, but, you know, estimated it's going to be in that sort of 5%
Range, okay.
Range. We do have increasing mandatory costs, like employee benefits and pensions and insurance, which we can't control. We have increasing education costs. We are limited by Prop 2.5, which this year is not an issue, but next year will be an issue. That is, you know, that is in turn limited by new growth in the town, which is something we need to work on long-term, I think.
Yeah, because you don't build a building in one year.
Right. We do have increasing debt as a result of this budget and we have future debt coming as a result of the fire station. So these are all things that people need to be aware of.
Exactly, and it sounds like the planning is there. Could we plan on anything more, is there anything? And I mean, I know the answer to this and I don't mean to be, you know, simplistic in it. I mean, we've all looked at it and we've only done increases as much as possible. But is there anything major more we could do to head off a 2.5 override? I don't think there is, but I'll ask you.
I think if we had to limit our budget below that 5% level, it would be very, very painful because you'd be cutting into things like fire, you know, police, education drastically.